All right, at this time we're going to take questions, so please don't be shy. We have a lot of panelists here who are very excited to answer your questions. So do we have anybody who wants to get us started? Maybe George wants to get us started?
Um, just several questions I got written on my phone here. I just recently moved in the Stubbs Park area. Councilman Johnson, I heard you talking about the dilapidated homes. Is Stubbs Park an area that you hope to focus on?
Yes, uh... The city of Dublin has, um... If you notice, we have bought some property in the Stubbs Park area that we are trying to renovate and that we are, we really are cleaning up that place. We are putting up sidewalks. Um, we're putting more police detail in that area. Most of the, uh...homes, I think we're gonna have a police beat over in that area also. And it's one or two streets that we have decided to address that are very dilapidated houses there that we are gonna focus on. I think this mayor and council has decided, you know, when I first got on council, we were bragging about how much money we had in the bank. I think at the time, Dublin before Mayor Best was there, I think we had about nineteen million dollars in the bank. But the infrastructure and our homes and a lot of dilapidated property, but we are addressing those areas now. But Stubbs Park, right now, we are focusing on Stubbs Park.
My second question had to do with the building that the police have taken over. I saw a banner on the house there at the end of Church Street. What, uh, what are they planning to do there?
Uh, that's gonna be the central office for the bicycle police. So that will be their headquarters, like police substation. I know they, I've been told, don't call it a substation. That is scary for a neighborhood, but I think it's a good thing. I mean, the police are gonna be right there, and especially the bicycle police, because everybody likes them. They're very friendly, they're very mobile, they'll be trolling that area. Um, and we hope to expand the bicycle police as we can get the funding to do it. But that would be, that brick two-story building, if you're familiar with it, looks like it was an old store, um, will be the, will be their headquarters. And then the other, we bought four houses there, and so the other ones will also be police. One is going to be the, um, central location for the Transformer program, program our chief, Tim Chapman, started. It's really helping, uh, we got tons of programs in the city that help youth, but what in Transformer, we didn't just need another program. But what Transformers does is, is somebody that is tired of basically being on the street, gang banging, whatever, they come into that program and it's not just another program that tries to reinvent the wheel, they look and say, "What do you need?" And then they get you to the existing programs that you already have, um, that are already out there. If you need a GED, they get you a DGE. You need a job, they help you find a job. They, they're very specific about helping you with whatever you need. So that's gonna be in another house. I think I'm going way past what you asked, but, um... And then we're gonna have, we're gonna fix one house up for a policeman to actually live in, in the area. We've got one already that is eager to move in, so we'll have policemen living in the area. Um, and then we've got a fourth house there, we're still trying to decide what best use of it is, but, um, I think that's gonna really change that neighborhood for the better.
Well, I call that, sounds good. Um, final question, let's see. Oh, well, I've got a couple, actually. All right, what is not having Sunday alcohol sales, what is that preventing for us? I've heard that we aren't getting restaurants because of that.
Specifically, Buffalo Wild Wings would be here now if we had Sunday sales. Um, Buffalo, the owner of the property and the, and Buffalo Wild Wings has told us that. They, they would be in Dublin now if we had Sunday sales. They're still ready to come. Uh, they're still looking at us if, you know, their, their plans could change, um, but right now their overall strategy, Dublin's still in it, and I, I think we've still got a good chance for them to come, uh, which is a great place to watch football on Sunday. If you've been to Buffalo Wild Wings, it's, it's a nice restaurant, sports bar of a kind we don't really have right now. Uh, all the, a big chain restaurant like, everybody loves Olive Garden, that's, I'm not, I'm not starting that room to be. A restaurant like that, uh, we've got several, we've been able to attract them without it, but it's difficult. Uh, they've been surprised, um, most every restaurant like Red Lobster, anybody that's built, has been surprised at the business they got and wish they'd built larger restaurants. So, um, Dublin is a lot better market than they realize, and this will take away an impediment that they look at. A lot of restaurants look at it, they just strike you off without looking any farther. So I think this will take, it takes away a barrier for a lot of things.
Tara, this one's probably for you. How are we working to kinda get that traffic off of I-16 to actually make a trip in town and spend some money downtown with us?
Um, well, I can tell you that our, our, several years ago in 2011, our Dublin Lawrence Tourism Council was created. Our tourism director's not here tonight, but I'll hopefully say the right thing about it. We, at that point, the, that organization began marketing the assets we have around Dublin, Lawrence County, and that, that council considers downtown its number one asset of Dublin. So a lot of marketing efforts go to that, um, through advertising, promotion, um, we've gotten a lot of state recognition. You know, a lot of it is through tourism. I'll also say that we have some excellent restaurants that have done a lot to anchor downtown. Dino's is nationally acclaimed, we now have Company Supply, and a lot of that is helping us, uh, sorta keep, keep marketing downtown. So we, um, the, I want, another thing is the visitor center, you know, we have the visitor center at Exit 51. Uh, they, I think they have something like fifteen hundred visitors coming through there. Every person that walks in the door is handed a downtown brochure and told about Dino's and Company Supply, and so, um, downtown's horn is tooted a lot out by the, out by the interstate, so, and that's good, you know, we're just a short four miles, and I think a lot of people are really pleasantly surprised once they, once they get here and they can get out, stretch their legs, have a nice meal. So we, there is a lot being done, and we're proud for it.
Thank y'all.
There are many ways of doing business today. Call centers, mobile apps. But when it comes to what really matters, our way is pretty simple. To be there when you need us most. That's the quality of your independent agent and the company that stands behind them.
Or Insurance in Dublin is your local independent auto owner's insurance agency.
I wanted to ask each panelist what the most exciting project that you're working on right now is. And I guess we could just start maybe with Trey, moving down that way. Is that okay?
Sure.
I think the coolest thing the county is doing right now is revamping the 911 system. I think most people have seen those, uh, those old Jason Bourne movies where they're tracking someone down and it says, uh, "Tracing call," and they have to wait, and if they hang up the phone, they don't find out, you know, where the bad guy's located. So we had that same problem currently in Lawrence County. When someone calls 911, especially from a cellphone, it takes us several minutes to track down where that person is. Um, we are currently in the process of revamping our telecom system to accommodate it, um, to accommodate the huge influx of cellphones, so that almost immediately if someone calls in from a landline or cellphone, we're gonna know exactly where they are, in the most, most rural of places. This is gonna help a lot of our first responders, and it's gonna help a lot of the, uh, the EMTs, um, who are also firefighters, to get to people who are in need and cut down the response time, especially in rural parts of the county. So that's, I think, the, the number one thing I'm most excited about in the coming months.
I think we have a lot of great things going on. It'd be hard to, to not mention our Valmira Glass project that's going out at, uh, the Highway 257, Exit, was it 49, um, next to Erdrick. Uh, so Valmira is, uh, beginning to, uh, construction first of October. Uh, they're hiring, uh, 425 people the day they open, so this won't be a three-to-five year ramp up like we see on a lot of our industrial projects. Uh, for those of you that are wondering, um, how in the world are we gonna find 425 people in rural Georgia to fulfill those jobs? Uh, we had over twenty-five-hundred applications, uh, about ninety-eight percent of those folks passed the initial drug test, uh, majority of those folks passed the assessment test. Uh, the first hundred and ten are in training today at the O'Conne Fall Line Technical College. They started this week. Uh, we flew a team to Latvia three times, customized a training program with their team, uh, came back to the States, are delivering it on-site in a ten-thousand-square-foot custom, customized training center, uh, and as far as we know, this has never been done in Georgia. So it's a really cool public-private partnership, uh, to, to fill those jobs, uh, and, and we're really, really excited. The company's very delighted, and so when folks say there's no labor in, uh, in rural Georgia, remind them that we had twenty-five-hundred people applying, uh, and some of the creme de la creme, and they're very, very excited about that. So you should see about a year, twelve to fifteen months of construction, uh, and then immediately after, you'll, you'll see them going to work. They have three years of production already sold out of that facility, so, uh, great company, gonna be a big, big asset for us.
Um, I know what Tara's gonna talk about, so I'll talk about the, uh, I was gonna talk about the plot, the new plaza and parking lot.
Don't let me have that one.
You, I know you're gonna do that, so... Um, uh, we've got, one thing we're doing goes along with what Councilman Johnson talked about with the dilapidated housing, I think it's really gonna help, is a land bank. Um, other bigger towns have them, uh, I don't know of a lot of smaller towns that have tried it, but what it does is, you know, as a city government, we're very, our hands are, are really tied in as far as being able to redevelop a property or, or sell a particular, a, if we have a piece of property that needs development, um, a developer comes and says, "Man, here's a project I can do on that." It's hard for us to sell that directly to them and put a deal together with different things. It's kinda like with Industrial Authority, they can do things that the city can't to attract the industry. Um, and so the state created these land banks that will let us basically take all our, um, in business, I guess it'd be a non-performing asset, but, uh, lots that we have taken for taxes, lots that people have dated to us that had all dilapidated houses, houses on them, we're, we're gonna be able to give the land bank those properties. Um, they can take those and start looking around for other properties that are dilapidated, dilapidated, that they can just purchase, start looking for developers that are interested in, uh, getting some housing back in Dublin, put together things where they can come in and, and buy all the houses on a block. Uh, and you'll see this, especially in Macon, and they've got a little more money to work with than we do on it, but, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna try to make it work. But you take a block, and maybe we'd do three or four houses, maybe in the area you're talking about. We take the four worst houses in the area, tear them down, uh, put a couple, two or three lots that we own that are vacant, and this land bank can put a deal together with a developer and all of a sudden get six new, brand-new, single-family homes and help them with the financing and all to, to really, and that just completely transforms the neighborhood. If you look at Savannah, Macon, places where they've done this, you, you take a terrible neighborhood and turn it into a great neighborhood. And, you know, it's just like, uh, one bad house pulls the whole street down, well, you put a good house on the street, it starts pulling the whole street up, 'cause all of a sudden somebody says, "Look at that brand-new house somebody just built, there's good folks living in it, I wanna live over there too." All of a sudden, somebody like Mr. Best sees the neighborhood getting better, is, uh, willing to take a chance on buying a neighborhood, a house in that neighborhood, fixing it up, and it, it, it's, it's like a snowball. Land bank kinda can take that ball and get it rolling down the hill, and hopefully, we're gonna really see a difference in our neighborhoods from that.
One area that we, today we are traveling to Vidalia, and it is time for Dublin to have a swimming pool. You know, young people, people that, from other communities, they have swimming pools in them, but in Dublin, for some reason or another, we got to change some people's mindsets. It's time for a swimming pool in Dublin, a public pool, so that people can enjoy. Uh, I don't like the idea that people have to go out to a motel, hotel, yes, to swim in. We need to have swimming teams here in Lawrence County. Uh, Vidalia, you know, I think about Vidalia, it's probably, what, ten thousand people? If Vidalia can do, I know that Lawrence and Dublin can have a swimming pool here.
Let me, just add that, I talked to a lady, her son, um, is in the military, and one of the things he's got to do, one of the, to advance, is, uh, a thing he's got to do with swimming, is see how long he can stay in the water for a certain amount of time, and he'd never had a chance to really swim before, 'cause he, we didn't have a public pool, they didn't have a pool, they weren't a member of any club or anything that had a pool. So, uh, it, it holds us back in ways I, I had never thought about. I, I'd never really thought about needing a public pool. When she told me that, I said, "Well, man, we're..." He's wanting to go into the military, advancing the military, and the lack of a pool when he was young is keeping him from moving up into military. Now, he's finally been able to practice enough and, and get through that now, but it's, uh, it affects us in a lot of ways. It's not just a place to go and splash around and have fun, it's, it's a life skill a lot of people need.
Um, one of the projects I am most excited about right now is, uh, what we are calling our Jackson Plaza and Parking Project. For many years, uh, parking is always a, a topic in downtown Dublin. We do have quite a bit of parking, we currently have thirteen-hundred public spaces. Um, it seems like it's never enough, so we're going to add seventy more public spaces in, in about a year, uh, over the next year, to downtown, and it will also add a beautiful new green space, um, that will connect the parking to our, our main street area, or Jackson Street area is what we, what we call it. So, um, the area I'm discussing is West Jackson Street, and, uh, there's a parking lot next to Pitt's Toyota that the city has purchased, and they are going to, um, open up a space and, and create a park there, a plaza, it'll have a meandering water feature and some, some natural, um, design and hardscapes added into it. It'll be a beautiful location for people to spend time, for people to eat. We have always struggled with the north side of Jackson Street, the development of that side, because there, of the lack of parking. We have street parking, but we just don't have a surface lot to really service more than, you know, one or two businesses. So, um, the, the addition of seventy parking spaces, we already have one building under renovation because of that. We have, uh, one that's looking to, uh, an owner that's looking to sell, and a group of people that are ready to renovate that, another one, so it's all just the talk of this project, and City Council putting funding forward towards it has, um, has already began the ball rolling on, on getting those buildings renovated. So it's a very important, um, project, and it's, like I said before, public, private investment follows public, and so it's really important for us to keep making these beautiful spaces and, and parking for people to enjoy having those amenities, and it'll keep, uh, retail coming and, and new restaurants.
I wanna, I wanna speak about a project, and then I wanna speak about, uh, an attitude. Uh, the project is the Riverwalk Project. We, uh, the Young Game Changers came to Dublin, how many years ago?
2014.
14, they came in 14, and gave a list of projects for us to all look at, not just City Council, but the community. And one of those projects was an extension of the downtown to the O'Conne River. We've got one of the most valuable tourism assets you can possibly imagine in that river, uh, but there's not even a place outside of Black Shear Ferry to put a canoe or a kayak in or, or to enjoy walking down the river. So even though this may be a little longer term than some of these other projects we're talking about, uh, I think the city is committed, I think I'm speaking to council members in the audience and, and Gary's up here, uh, to making that a, a reality. Uh, the attitude I wanna talk about is what you see, uh, day-to-day in this community that you don't see a lot in, in a lot of other communities, and that's a collaboration and cooperation between the city and county governments, the Development Authority, the DDA, uh, the young professionals, uh, guys, I'm gonna tell you, I, I travel with Georgia Municipal Association throughout the state of Georgia, and there's people that are envious of Dublin and Lawrence County, and what we're able to accomplish, and the reason we're able to accomplish that is because we agree to disagree. We don't agree on everything, but we know that everybody that's working has the right, uh, motives behind what they're trying to do, and we all try to work together for the common good of all. Uh, yeah, we got some improvements we need to do, uh, we're still not there. Uh, I've read something this week, uh, that I think Vince Lombardi said, and said, "We'll never see, we will never reach perfection, but we will reach excellence on the way to perfection." So I think we need to all continue to work together as we do now. Uh, we understand that everybody's gonna have different ideas, we need to listen to those ideas and, and bring them all together and work together to make our community a better place.
Accidents destroy lives and property. Recovery is painful, so when it comes to legal help, you want compassionate attorneys who will fight for your rights, a friend in the system, an attorney more interested in your well-being than their bank account.
At the Jackson Law Firm, we care about people. We're about better lives and better tomorrows. Call us if you need help.
The Jackson Law Firm, the safe place to rest your case.
I have two questions. Uh, the first one, I just would like somebody to speak on behalf of, just knowing what's going on downtown. Uh, you know, I hear a lot of people say they feel like it's not safe, they feel like it's dangerous, and I live downtown, and we love it. So I just would like to hear, what is the current state of things going on downtown? Is it safe? We think it is, but I wanted to hear maybe on one of y'all's, what you might know about.
I can, I, I think it is safe. I, I think if you, if you, uh, you, you have to exercise a caution downtown you would anywhere. I mean, it, you look, just, it's terrible, and I hate to mention it, but what just happened in Walmart parking lot, twelve o'clock in the afternoon. There are a lot of just crazy people in the world, and it's, uh, it doesn't matter where you live, I mean, people talk about Mayberry, but, um, if you go back and watch Andy Griffith, they were locking people up all the time, there were murderers coming through town, and there was some bad folks coming through Mayberry, so, um, I, you, you just have to be aware everywhere you are. I think downtown's very safe, we've got two police officers dedicated to downtown, um, we had some, uh, it's, and we try, really, our, our police chief really tries to watch where crime is starting to pick up and get people into the area in a hurry. When something, they call it a hot zone, if something starts to look like, "Hey, those guys are starting to pick on this place," um, they get in the area, and that's, we recently did that downtown. We had a couple of, you know, people break into some buildings, we immediately assign more police officers, get them in there, get them in there more often, in and out. Um, but I, yeah, I think downtown's very safe, it's a place, I mean, come try it out, you know, come, uh, walk around, see what it's like in the evening. Um, I think you'll find that you'll, you'll feel very secure, and that, that it's like everywhere else, and more people that are there, the safer we all are. So, uh, as, as the businesses have increased, or restaurants, or more places to go, it just gets, it's safer and safer. I guarantee you, I feel a lot safer here than walking downtown in Macon or Atlanta, so...
Thank you. My next question is maybe to Brad, but, um, with Valmira coming in and all the expansion of jobs, what's the plan for housing for new people coming in? And also, just as a young professional moving here, it was, it was difficult, I think, to find a place to live or renting when you first get here. Is there any type of plan for young professionals if they move here to expand that?
Not sure I'm the best one to answer, other than to validate your question, um, it is an issue. Valmira's bringing fifty German families here. Uh, it's what they claim, over two-to-three-year period while they transition the plant and get it up and operational, and they've expressed some legitimate concern over where these folks gonna live, and, you know, we, we also struggle with how do we get international students into our school systems when majority of them speak German and, and not a lot of English, and, you know, we, as a community, we've excelled at that over twenty-five years with Japanese and YKK's impact on our community, we've gotten better at it. But as we attract international projects, those are some painful things we gotta try to overcome. Uh, I'd like for some others maybe to, to offer some input on, but we do have a housing shortage here, uh, and it, it is impacting our ability to recruit.
One thing we're gonna have to do is depend on private development to help us with that. That's, that's gonna have to happen. Uh, the second thing, though, is, is we got an inventory of houses in neighborhoods that are beautiful, great houses, if we can make people feel safe in those neighborhoods. Uh, the dilapidated house ordinance that was created now fifteen years ago and introduced by Gary Johnson, uh, we, we were going great guns with it for a while, and then it just fell off. But if you go into a neighborhood, and let's use Stubbs Park as an example, there's some homes over there that are just outstanding, and I think any young person or older person would like to live there. But until we're able to get the, uh, dilapidated structures taken care of, and it's the broken window theory. If, if a window gets broken and you let that go, then the next thing to happen is the house gets dilapidated, and the next thing to happen is there's crime in the house, and the next thing to happen is there's crime in the neighborhood. So we gotta use the broken window theory and stop that and stop, there's people, y'all, that are landlords that are, uh, from Dublin and some that are not from Dublin, that are just have houses that I wouldn't want my dog living in. And we've got to, we've got to grab that, and when we do, the housing issue is gonna take, take a lot of feet of its on. Uh, one of the things we're talking about, and council is looking at this right now, is a blight tax. Now, what a blight tax is, is if that person doesn't care for that home, uh, and won't bring it up to code or bring it to at least a safety standard, then we can actually impose a blight tax on that house, and it's based on, uh, your Avalon tax, and it can be up to, this is hypothetical, it could be seven times what your regular taxes are, and as soon as you get that house where it needs to be, then that tax comes off. I say all that, you know, to say, "We've got good inventory here, we've just gotta get people comfortable with living in the community and in the, in the neighborhoods that we've got." I hope I didn't take too long on that, but it's, it's really a passion of ours right now. I mean, it really is, it's just, needs to be corrected.
That, along with the land bank, and, and we're, we're fixing to, or we've applied to participate in the state, it's, it's an ugly name, but it's the GIC program, it's a Georgia initiative for community housing, and it's, uh, it's, uh, some technical assistance from the state, it's three-year program we'll go through, um, getting their expertise and helping us look at the community, decide, figuring out what kinda, what, what do we need? What housing do we need in Dublin? What's our inventory? What do we need? And then how do we go about getting that? So that's another program that the city's participating in, and we hope it's gonna keep pushing us forward on getting good quality housing in the city. And I agree with the mayor, uh, you can ride into any neighborhood in town, and yeah, you might find some bad houses, but you'll find some great houses. You'll find some beautiful older homes, you'll find houses that are kept up far better than I will ever keep up a house. In the worst neighborhood in town, you can find somebody that keeps their yard immaculate, beautiful flowers. So we need to take those people and help them out and get rid of the bad stuff around them, and then it, they'll come back naturally.
I have one question for Tara. Um, I know that, I don't hate that you mentioned this, but I know that one of the sort of initiatives that you have is the Little Library Project, which our group, and which the Southern Lawrence County is happening to help you on. Can you just expand on what that is and what your vision is for that, and how you see us helping, um, and how it's gonna help the community out?
I will. Free Little Library is a, uh, it's a movement that started, um, it's a local movement that started several years ago, and basically, the, the logistics of it is, someone builds a small structure, maybe it looks like a house, maybe it's a replica of a pro, a building that you have here, and you install that structure in a tra, a high-traffic area or a unique area of town, and the slogan of Free Little Libraries is, um... And the slogan of Free Little Libraries is leave one, take one, and it just really encourages literacy from childhood to adulthood. It's a sort of a community sharing, and there's lots of aspects of it that's just, it's just a feel-good project. So what I would love to do is install several few, several free little libraries around town, I think it would be something really interesting for us, the young professionals have graciously expressed that they would, they would help, and I think they are going to help next month at their meeting, and help us begin collecting donations of books at their next meeting. So we have a contractor that has expressed interest in lending his talents, a carpenter that's gonna lend his talents to building as soon as we can sort of decide what we want, and we've already even started thinking about locations, and, you know, I think, when I first started thinking, I'm, you know, this would be excellent for downtown, but really, it would be, I think, an excellent project for all over the community. It's just something that really can band the community together, you're promoting literacy, you're sharing with one another. So, you know, you can stop by in the evening, leave a book maybe you've read, and pick up one that someone's left there, and it's, it's for adults, it's for children. I would encourage you, if you're on social media, to check them out, Free Little Library, they're on Instagram, they have a great Instagram account, they're also on Facebook, it's just a, a really good project, a sort of a grassroots, it's a community grassroots project, and it's taken off in a lot of different towns. And then you register your Free Little Library, and it becomes part of a, sort of a national map of Free Little Libraries.
The Ice House is a beautifully restored warehouse in downtown Dublin that mixes southern grace and history with an urban modern flair. Book your next special event today at 278-7224. The Ice House, downtown Dublin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think I'd like to address Mr. Norton. My name's Anita Hill-Greiff. The Kmart building, is there any future prospects on that?
Thank you, Ms. Anita, for that question. We were really, really disappointed to see them go out of business. Mostly what we focus on with the development authority is industrial, manufacturing, and distribution, so we don't dabble in a lot of retail development. I can tell you, though, we have had a couple of large call centers that we've, we've courted and have shown that building to. One particular one, we're, we're courting right now, that's looking at that building, it'd be a great location, a lot of parking, they need a lot of parking. So I don't, I wanna manage everyone's expectations, we've, we've got a long way to go, but they are looking at it, they've been down to see it two or three times. Outside of that, I, I can't think of any project we would particularly work, but I know there's Patty Burns, who's my friend, who's the broker out of Macon, Georgia, Fickling and Associates, has shown a grocery store that, that site, I know there's been three or four others that have looked at in the last 90 days. Cross your fingers and let's all say a prayer, 'cause that, that facility, that, that Kmart was about 90% of that entire development out there. When Walmart closed, it had a lot of other tenants in there that kind of kept that center alive, Kmart was the thousand-pound griddle there. So we need somebody to get back in that space.
Okay, my next question, I don't know if it falls between you, Mr. Norton, and the developer, what about, and I am in retail, so I'm counting, it's a retail question. Also, we've heard, not, not, don't want to, about Target coming to Dublin? Anybody?
Nothing I know, I don't know of anybody either.
My other, it's not quite a question, but tonight I was under the impression, I think I got my meetings mixed up, I was coming to the rezoning meeting, I thought for Wells Fargo, but I've learned that that was, it's supposed to be Tuesday, am I right? Anybody know?
Yes.
But anyway, I was gonna ask, I think that would be you, is, are you rezoning, and whoever rezoned?
I'm the C manager, so, yeah.
Okay. I'm just gonna say this, and I know I'm ahead of my time, but I don't know if I'll make that meeting Tuesday, but I'm gonna try to make it. Does anybody have any other feedback on that particular area and how busy it is when two cars get in line to go to the ATM, how it blocks traffic? And I'm gonna tell you, I witnessed it, 'cause that's my bag. And you, I mean, I'm smart, so if I see two cars, I'm gonna go into the parking area and park in one of the other parking spaces. But does anybody else, you know, does anybody else have any feedback on how we're gonna proceed?
Everybody's not as smart as you.
That's all we can say.
There's a bunch of, we've, we've been at city council, and city manager's been working diligently on it. I think this is gonna be a temporary cure, what they're doing, I don't think it's a permanent cure, I think the four-laning of Hillcrest will probably help a lot, but, which is on, on the drawing board, but it's, it's, it's idiotic.
Yeah, we're not, nobody will admit to knowing how that thing got there. I, I've, we've tried to figure it out, nobody will say, yeah, we know how that got approved, but they, what they've applied is for a variance. If their variance goes through at that meeting, they will be able to move that to another place on their lot. We're trying to encourage them, and, and the construction on Hillcrest is gonna close that off anyway, they're not gonna be able to use that drive, so, but we're trying to get them to move it before that, 'cause construction's not gonna start till in 2017, so we're trying to get it. We've been working with them since we, for months, working through their corporate folks to try to go ahead and get that thing out of the way. The city put up those, you know, don't block the road signs, and they helped, they helped a tiny bit, but not terrible, and we've started. The, the thing we've been doing with them is, we don't wanna write your customers' tickets, but we have to, you know, but they, they are working on getting it moved now.
Basically, I know we've talked about the dilapidated houses and the tax being proposed and everything. Basically, I wanna know about the accountability of, you know, just maintaining your lawn. I know in my neighborhood, which doesn't have any dilapidated houses or anything, bushes are up over the house, very nice houses, there's a couple of Stubbs Park, but you can't even see that nice house back there because of the, because of, and Mr. Johnson, you mentioned the cars up on blocks, I mean, how are we gonna resolve that? Is there a citation process, or, I mean, I know the tax is coming, but, you know, it's a little bit more than, than, than just the structures themselves, it's the surrounding structures.
Yeah, the, the law on cutting your grass, basically, you can let your grass get 18 inches high, I think that's probably too high, we probably need to look at, at lower than that some, 'cause 18, I know behavior can jump up almost 18 inches overnight, and so you don't wanna be too tough on people, but if you got a weed that's three feet high, you know you haven't cut your grass in a long time. We really don't have an ordinance that would address people not trimming their shrub, where you can let a tree or a shrub grow up big as you want to, pretty much. I mean, that might be something we should change, but it's, 'cause you can, if you plant shrubs at your house and let them grow over the house, like you're talking about, yeah, they look terrible, maybe the house is fine, but it makes it look abandoned. The cars are something we write many, many tickets on, I don't know where they come from, I know when I was prosecuting in municipal court, we, one month, we hit 70 tickets one month for dilapidated cars in one small neighborhood. So it's just something you just have to stay after all the time. Now, one thing we've done is we're bringing on, has started, he's kind of training right now, but a, an extra code enforcement officer, 20 hours a week, that is a, that is a police officer, he's a certified officer. So I think he's gonna be able to make much better, faster cases, especially now that it's a great thing, we've got a lot more development, a lot more people redoing their houses, factories being built. Our inspection department usually handles dilapidated stuff, is, doesn't have time to do as much as they used to. But I'm hoping this officer's really gonna make a difference, 'cause that's gonna be his only job, he's not gonna be getting pulled away to inspect somebody's electrical work, he's gonna be 20 hours a week writing tickets for nuisances, exactly like you're talking about.
All right. Mr. Johnson, you mentioned the pool a couple times, how, I mean, is that just in the beginning stages? Do you know anything about possible locations or anything like that?
Well, we have a committee that will be looking after this. We don't know the location yet. We're gonna have a committee, that's the only thing I can say right now, to work on this, but we are going to move forward with it. But we're gonna try to get the recreation department involved in it, because we talked about that today, we need the recreation involved. And like I was talking to the mayor earlier, it was passed years ago in the splosh that we were gonna build a pool. I don't know what happened, what happened to what phase, but something happened that it was never built.
Last question, you know, growing up, I remember going to Stubbs Park, you know, the Arden Park, everything, it was great, it was big time. With this past year, rag riders coming through, and it was a great event, did we see more events, you know, coming back to Stubbs Park to, to generate business in that area, or it was just pretty much it?
Yes, we, we talked about it with Rebecca McWilliam Tourism, and we want to get, I mean, that, I think that's, again, is what the police chief says, if you get good people in there, it drives out bad people. So the key to getting Stubbs Park renewed every area of town is get good people in there. The more good folks are using the park, the fewer bad folks will be in there making a mess. So we have discussed, we want to plan more and more events in there, just come up with, not wait for something, to, somebody to have an idea that we could do in Stubbs Park, but say, hey, we needed, it's been a month, we need a new event in Stubbs Park, so that we keep things, keep things going there.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna put Tara on the spot here a minute. You know, a great thing that, to go in Stubbs Park would be the barbecue cook-off.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I know Farmer's Market is almost outgrown it now, but if we could put the barbecue cook-off there, that'd be great.
I will add to that, speaking of events, we, and talking about programming Stubbs Park, events work, they do work, that's something that DDA focused on four years ago when I started, was building a body of events and getting foot traffic in the area, and foot traffic brings business, and, and so it all just sort of flows together. One thing I will mention, though, is that events don't come easy, and so anytime that you know of someone that maybe has an idea for an event or wants to get involved in events, please encourage them to do so, either through DDA, you can reach out to me, and I'll put you in the right contact with people, but it, it's very important, we, we can do all we can do, but we also need your help. If you, if you like to come to these events, if you like the Farmer's Market, if you wanna go to a live concert in Stubbs, ask how you can help, too, you know, maybe you can put out a few posters, maybe you can show up that day and, and help set up, you know, so volunteerism is sort of a lost art, and it's something that we all really need servant hearts for our community, and, and every little bit helps, and events, events are hard to come by, right Lance? They take a lot of work and a lot of resources, so I would encourage you that if you like events that are going on, and you want more events in more areas to get involved, call Lance, ask him what you can do, and, and, you know, we'd love for somebody to come with, come to us with an event idea and say, yes, you got it, do it, you know, and so I just encourage young professionals, and, you know, as you're growing, just to let people know that we, we are open to ideas and, and help.
It's time to tackle our great saves on all of our hardwood flooring. We've got a great lineup of laminates, ceramics, and carpets.
So roll in to Bailey's Custom Flooring.
Don't forget, we also have vinyl and carpet in stock.
In Athens, Georgia, there's a group that has been created by local officials called Athens Made. The sole focus of this group is to attract makers and entrepreneurs to Athens through meetings like centralized job postings, information on local housing, business startup assistance, and even small business loans. In what ways can you see our city and county officials going the extra mile to attract young entrepreneurs and professionals to our area?
Good question.
That's a great question.
That question's so easy, I'm gonna let Tara.
It's a really hard question. You know, there's always this idea of, what are the limitations, what, you know, and, and communication is always very hard, there's no, and we, we do have, we don't really have a central location, it's, I get a lot of, call Tara Bradshaw, she'll find, you know, from this one and this one, you know, that happens, and, and we try to help best we can. I think a Dublin-made sector or organization would be an excellent add-on for our community. We are, and you know this, constantly contacted by people wanting to maybe open a business, maybe they don't need 1,000 square feet, maybe they really just need a couple hundred square feet to do what they do, or maybe they need an office with a shared, a shared space of some sort, I don't know. So it, it is, you, you really bring up a good point, that it's important for us to be mindful of, of the big industries, but it's also really important for us to, to be open and flexible and available to young entrepreneurs, because that is who is shaping the culture of America right now, is our millennials, and I love the, the efforts that are being made with Macon Made even, another organization that's, that's really helping artisans, and there's a guy over there that has a space, and he worked with the College Hill Alliance, and he has a 3D printer, and he makes prototypes for people, and, and we've talked with Georgia Southern University before about maybe putting in a laboratory that, that entrepreneurs can come in, so there's been some talk of it. Nothing really come to fruition yet, we did a study, and Dublin is ready for some, it's called a Fab Lab, Georgia Southern University has a Fab Lab, they're putting it in downtown Statesboro, so something like that, I think you will see that happen, and, and I think downtown Dublin is an excellent spot for it. You know, downtowns tend to be really good homes for entrepreneurs and makers, and I think it's important for us to make sure we have spaces for them, and we have residential available for them, and, and, you know, we'll just see how it goes the next few years, but yeah, an effort to create a Dublin-made sector would be awesome.
There's a, if you want to, Google Featherbone Institute in Gainesville, Georgia, it's a, it's a incubator for entrepreneurs, and it was an old industry site that they divided up into sections, and people leased the sections, 200 feet, 100 feet, 500 feet, and their rent was very reasonable, but they gave part of their earnings to the institute in order to keep the ball rolling. But that's the kind of thing that Georgia Southern kind of looks at, and it helps. There's another program with the veterans called Boots, what is it, Boots to, some sort of thing for veterans to go back to work, and it's same type deal, but that's, it's a good thing, we just need to figure out how to do it.
It's an excellent idea.
The other point, I'd just add one more point, is we've got three colleges and universities here now, what, how much sense does it make to educate all of our young folks and then chip them off to places of better opportunity, when we can capture that brain trust and provide them an opportunity to create a business or to start a business, or, so we need, we need, we need to be looking into those things.
I can tell you what it's gonna take, it's gonna take somebody to say, I want this to happen, and I'm gonna work on it, and it's willing to, it's willing to just, every day, every day, get up and say, what can I do to make that happen? Because we're, we're like everybody else, we got a million things and a million different projects, and somebody's just got to take the bull by the horns and say, what we need is, and I'm not, I, I think what you're talking about is like a business incubator, and there's been, people have talked about it, but nobody's said, I'm gonna make that happen, and, and that, that's, we went and visited one in Selma, Alabama, wonderful, wonderful facility, things they're doing over there, cookies you can buy, I forget what the brand is, but you can buy them out at the Cracker Barrel. But guy started with his mama's cookie, cookie recipe at the business incubator in Selma. But it's just gonna take somebody saying, I'm, I'm gonna make it happen, and I'm discouraged today, and it didn't happen today, it didn't happen this month, but we'll keep working on it till we find a place and figure out how to make it go.
And they're not just popping up in Atlanta and Macon and the rest of, my hometown of Moultrie, Georgia, is smaller than Lawrence County, and they've just started one, so it, it, we can make it happen.
Yeah, it's just gotta get on the radar of our leadership, and I think you did a great job by bringing it up tonight.
I have one question, this is just real quick. I think young professionals definitely wants to encourage people our age to become responsible and involved in our community, it's definitely one of, one of their goals. So keeping that in mind... So keeping that in mind, what can we do to bring dilapidated properties to the attention of our officials? If we tour a rental property that, you know, doesn't seem quite up to code, or if there's a house next door to us that needs some attention, what do we do to get it on your radar?
Send pictures to Lance Jones. That's what I do, that's what Gary does, that's what, I mean, seriously, we need to make it a priority. If you see something, take a picture of it, and in fact, we're looking at a program, I don't know where we are with it, Click It and Fix It.
See Click Fix.
Click, click, fix, is that, how are we coming on that, Lance?
We, we did not do the expensive sign-up. You can do that now, you can, you can do that right now. There's a, you pay them a bunch of money every year and you get a, it's like all those things on the, on your telephone, you pay them some more money, you get it a little bit better one, but you can use that now, See Click Fix, hit it, it comes to us, we get it. But the best thing to do is just pick up the phone and call me. You can always call, just call the city and ask for the inspections department, the planning and zoning, they handle that, but probably the quickest thing is just calling me and I'll get it to them.
And take a picture of it.
Yeah, a picture helps, because we don't want to be on the wrong house.
Does that happen?
I want to thank Mayor Phil Best, City Councilman Gary Johnson, Tara Bradshaw, Director, Main Street Dublin, Dublin Downtown Development Authority, Lance Jones, City Manager, Trey Kemp, District Two Lawrence County Commissioners, and Brad Lofton, President of Dublin Lawrence County Development Authority. Thank you all so much for coming, attending this event. Thank you to our panel, because there was a lot that I didn't know tonight, and I learned a lot. And I think we all at Young Professionals think that it's just about asking questions, finding out about your community, and when you get passionate about it, get involved. So thank you all so much for coming. I want to thank Fairbye Park again, and again, let's give one big round of applause to our panel.[1787.01]